You got the list?
Dusty? Yeah.
Hey, welcome back after the break. Okay, so we got the big 2025 project listing. It has the 2024 closing balance estimates for cumulative surplus, which is what we do surplus, reserves and extra funding. Miss LaRue, if you just kind of like to do a go over, not everyone, just kind of the group. So what I'm looking for is just how to read this and project description carried forwards from 2024, maybe why we've got carried carried from 2024, approved in 2024, and then new requests.
And so through the mayor, carry forward from 2024 is projects that were approved as part of last year's capital plan, I say capital loosely, some of them are operating, but weren't completed. Some of them have started, but they just haven't quite finished. Some of them didn't start at all, but the funds have already been earmarked for those projects. So there's no, no future impact to tax payers. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's why I was just gonna ask because I noticed some of them were like from when you say they're starting in 2024, some of the requests here were 2021, completion date 2022. So these ones that were approved like four, five years ago and they've just been brought back now.
Uh, no, there's in some cases they were approved a number of years ago and have been carried forward each year so that we can try to get to them.
They so, but they just never showed up like last year on the financial banks. I don't remember seeing some of these and I actually looked back at last year's package and they were not in those projects.
Uh, which ones?
Uh, there was. There are a couple, okay, there's a couple here for exterior doors for the rec center 2021. There's a couple here with Lauren Card's name on them from 2021. Master and Sue.
So, but are you looking at?
First aid responders training license.
So the, the first responder license is if it's every two or three years, I believe it's every two years, then the fire department has to be recertified, uh, three years. Okay. But those other ones that you've mentioned are not listed and are carried forwards.
Okay. And then mention new budget requests.
So they could be in the next section, which I can talk about now. You like, uh, so carry forward again, they were part of last year's approved project plan, but haven't been completed. Funds are there already, they're being carried forward to this year. Council can of course scratch any amount. In many cases, that would be a, a big detriment to the district to get rid of them. We could lose grant funding on some of them or just the work we've already put in would be kind of lost. The middle section says approved in 2024 and I apologize, it, it's bad wording when I did it. I was just copying from last year's and changed 23 to 24. What it should have said was previously approved.
As far as confused.
Yes. So the, and I just for example, the grant writer, that wasn't actually approved in 2024. It was just approved a couple of council meetings ago. So again, bad wording, my bad, but what I meant was already approved. The bottom section is the new request. So those are, and council has been given prioritized listings from the rec center and public works as far as their, in their opinion of which of the projects are higher and lower priorities. Again, these projects, none of them are funded through taxation. They're all funded through the district's accumulated surplus. So removing any projects, of course, will leave funding in reserve funds if they're, if they're funded through reserves, but it won't impact any levels of taxation.
Okay, so on the pre-approved in 2024, this school host property, we've got 1.2 million. So is that safe to say that we have applied for a grant of 957? And if we get that grant, then we are committing 242 to complete that.
Correct, and council passed a resolution we did last year, right? I was just kind of.
Yes. Okay, anybody have any questions?
The hydrant replacement has been.
Councilor McCary.
The hydrant replacement has been done.
I think it's on John later, but we'll let.
Yep, and through the, through the mayor, it has been done. So we have replaced a number of hydrants last year, we've done updates and what we wanted to do last year, but every year there are a couple. That is where asset management comes in handy because what that means is we'll say, let's keep updating now on works employee with this probably go dark at a map like a, like a hydrant update, update. So definitely one is there that we could do is getting updated on those older ones have all the technology, put their pucks on them and things that need updating. So although we managed to get all of the hydrants up and going and repaired and everything was flushed and everything was being painted last year and they went all inspected last year, which is fantastic, that's exactly what we want to do. But there are a couple just to start getting updated. I think if you take $25,000 every year, that's a safe bet to say that you can replace, right? Five point five, anything on the operation side of things, yeah, just do five every year. That's a, that's a good thing to be replacing as a, as a habit to do that.
If I could, it, it's in a lot of cases, it's smarter to do them not all at once. Do them replaced because otherwise they're all gonna fail all at the same time too, right? So.
Yeah. Okay, so that, yeah, I thought we had them all doing pretty good there.
Yep.
And so we're, for $25,000, we can replace, how many of them? Five? Are we hoping to do that? And what are we doing with the old ones? Do they still work or, or what is there?
Uh, yeah, through the mayor, I would say that they probably work, but I mean, the efficiency of these and the leaks that you get through old agents and some of the problems we get are, it's becoming harder and tougher to get parts, tough every piece parts where that they are getting more outdated. And just really, these are the kind of things you want to make sure that you're at least. The older ones, I know that when I worked in other areas could get auctioned off. So a lot of people look for old ones for their yard and their gardens and stuff, just as a decorative thing. So we could take them and sell them on.
We do have a disposal policy as part of our purchasing policy that outlines how we get rid of stuff. So we can auction it off, we can put it on Facebook like we did the trucks, VC bid. So we do have a process for getting rid of stuff that still works.
Yeah.
Um, question on the request for the stage. Um, it's kind of a two fraker. So we're, they're looking at $36,000 for a community stage, which by the sounds of it at the current stage is pretty much done. The stage, and then we also have a request for the apricot festival funding, which has an amount in their budget of over $5,000 for the rental of the stage. Stage I know is used for apricot fest. It's used for reconciliating. Purchasing the stage, which is going to be a long lasting item here that would reduce what we could give or bring down the, what am I trying to say?
Uh, you're correct. And I did mention that at the last meeting, part of the apricot festival request did include a stage rental, depending on how quickly we were able to source a stage. I don't know, I don't know how in demand they are, or I wouldn't imagine too much, but who knows? Assuming we were to have a new stage before the apricot festival, then yes, we could reduce what they're asking for by, and I said approximately $5,000, those are pretty loose numbers.
Yes.
Yes.
Just throwing that out there.
Yes.
But while you're throwing that out there, can we make that, when you do that, like will, can we reduce it if we can get the stage or is that something that has to come back to council?
No, council can certainly, I mean, staff direction is enough to say that if we get a new stage in time, we're not giving them the full 20%.
Because I think that's a good.
Yeah.
A good.
Yeah, and that's.
And you're okay with that?
That would be my intention off the, off the bat to you, Miss Lee, yes.
I don't have anybody here. I was wondering about the doors because the rec center doors, it's, they've allocated $50,000 for doors and I know that they installed six sets of double doors in 2019 and will install as many of the remaining exterior doors as this budget will allow.
Yes, so that budget request is from a few years back, 2021. Yeah. And we were actually talking with Bean about this, asking if we should remove it from the budget. And what, what the idea is, is to change a bit of the scope of it to enable for the 24 hour fitness room access. So for that budget that was set aside for doors, instead the exterior door to get into the fitness center and the, you know, the key card that you would need and the, there's a number of other components that we have to go with it, that that would be useful.
And that was hopefully offset sort of through the mayor, that would be what you generate, what I can come as well. So we're looking to try and increase revenues to give into the rec center. One of the revenue makers was increased for 24 hour access. So to gain 24 hour access, we spend a bit of money in what we're doing to gain that. And we're hopefully not going to spend $50,000 on a couple of doors in some, some entrance ways, but there is a fair bit of machine mechanic plus open that then brings in revenue as well. So that's one of the just kind of speculative family kind of things.
Okay.
Which is getting very positive reviews through some of the conversations we're having. Just let me just get, it's getting about traction, so we want to get the funding.
Broken record here, trash bins. It's been put on the priority list is low for, as a public perception issue. Public perception is important, so yeah, I want that one moved up.
Okay.
I'm fine is, because I think it's gonna stay in the budget. I presume it's gonna stay in the budget.
So unless council tells me something's a no-go.
Right.
This is what we're gonna.
Okay, so.
I know it's lower on as far as public works opinion of priority, but unless council eliminates it, it's still there.
So while we're on that trash bins, can we talk about the trash bins? Because I would rather see single trash bins put in there and anything. I'm not fond of, and this is just me, but not fond of sticking my hand into something I can't see where I'm sticking it into. And I know that for all kinds of ways I'm crazy, but I have a problem with that. So I did ask council for some different tops or what's, you know, bear proof that doesn't require people to, to do that. So, and I would like to see, because I know that when, when we did this last year, there was I think six doubles and they were recycling, recycling and not. And I would rather see singles if you guys are okay.
I, another suggestion I would like to, it to be looked at when we're looking at the cans is to make sure that they are child and mobility, that people have an easier accessible. Because I know one of the cans, you've got to do this and you've got to do that. If you're smaller, trying to throw your garbage in, you can't get it in, you're gonna leave them on the ground.
If I could suggest with the trash bins, because I know it was, it was quite a, a thing, what I could suggest is that we say, yes, we're doing trash bins, but that staff bring a report to council on the specific trash bins prior to the purchase.
Excellent.
Yeah.
And about expectations.
Wonder.
Okay, I'd like to talk about the column bearing, $70,000. So that is where you go down to the grave site and you look at the map. So, and what these columns are, are these big huge rock columns and you put your loved ones in there. So first of all, the ones in Kelowna, both my parents are, they're not in one of them, but they have a grave site there. And so I went and looked at those a while back and last year and they're not that, I, I didn't think that they were nice. I mean, they're okay, but they're not, they're not a lot of the great. The ones in Kamloops, Frank and I went for a walk through there and they had them there. They were absolutely stunning, really beautiful. And they, you could buy an individual little column and it looked like a little, I don't know, cement square post that, and you could put your whole family in there or you could put one or two people in there and you could just buy them. It was, and, and it was all done in this section and it was simply beautiful. And that, that graveyard is, is beautiful too. And that's the one right downtown, Notre Dame, Notre Dame, Notre Dame, yes. So anyways, uh, in looking at ours, so I went there and I was looking at that map. Now, a couple of years ago, we had a couple of students, they came in and they did all the, the new mapping and I understand there's no, they didn't do any digital copy of that. They just did the actual mapping of where people were. So there was the, the occupied, there was the reserved and then there was empty ones. So I think, um, I have to say, the graveyard looked very nice when I was down there on Sunday. It looked very nice. It was well maintained, it, you know, it, it just looked really good. But I think for the, for the column, I think this needs a lot more thought into where we're gonna go with this, what we want it to look like. And I think we need to be digital first. I don't know how much it would cost to be digital, but I think that's something that we should look at before we spend $70,000 on whatever. Well, we've still got, we've still got a few spaces, like quite a few spaces, like right along the edge and, and yeah, there was multiple. And I have to wonder too, I mean, just because they're reserved, do all these people know that they still have a reserved spot? Because there's quite a few reserved and, you know, I just, I just have to wonder in the, in the day and age of getting cremated and illegally spreading them that we, you know, tend to do, if people really realize that they, that their loved ones or their parents or their grandparents actually reserved a spot, but they never found the paperwork or whatever, I don't know. Especially if we just got the paperwork a couple of years ago and it's not even digitalized. I know that there would be, like you said, Mr. So that there would be a list downstairs of all those plots. And so, I don't know, I'm ready to, I, I'd like to kick this one for now and not start spending money on rock column bariums, if you guys are okay with that?
Yeah. Especially there's more room.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, okay, I'd like to talk about the HVAC system. So we've got HVAC for the municipal at 150 and that's coming out of the climate action surplus. And then we have another HVAC system that is under the museum upgrade. It's under museum upgrades and I'm not sure how much that prices. So first of all, I'd like to know if we do one, are we doing both? And second of all, I'd like to know if we're, we're asking for grants for these because there's a lot, I was looking online, there's a lot of energy grants out there and there's about three different places that offer HVAC grant opportunities. So.
So through the mayor.
Yeah.
First, we wouldn't be using a grant if council recalls. We were talking about the climate action grant funding that we have, that we have to use the $122,000 this year. That's what we would like to use it for. If you have been in the office as the law. The museum is a separate project. Could we use some of that climate action funding that we have for parts of that project? Potentially, yes. Yeah, it would, because it's our building. We could, yes.
Okay, I would just like to see some grant funding because even if we were to get grant funding for the HVAC in the municipal system or in the municipal building and the HVAC in the museum and we could get grant funding on both, we could split the cost that we were gonna spend of the climate action fund, could we not? And, and pay for both of them with grants on both.
So the climate action is a grant.
Right.
But if we got more. Another grant. We have applied, did we apply?
We applied and wasn't accepted.
Yeah, so absolutely with any of these projects, if we see a grant that would, that these projects would be eligible for, absolutely we try and go for the grants.
So which one did we, did we apply for that we got rejected? Because I know there's three of them out there that I, I found.
I can't remember the agricultural.
Yeah, I, I thought it had green in it somewhere. I, I would have to look, I'm, I'm not positive off the top of my head.
There is one that has.
Um, that is a green, but 100% for any projects. If we find a grant that would cover it, we're like, that's why we have a grant, right?
Right, exactly. And like the museum is $100,000 coming out in general. So like I said, I'd like to see that offset with some sort of grant funding to all people. I mean, it's gotta be museum funding. I mean, there's lots of museum fundings out there as well, so. And it's nothing in the grant.
Because, yeah, the, the ATRAC for the municipal office is there because we already have that money, right? We don't have to apply for it or anything. For the museum, 100% if we can find a grant, which as you say, there's lots of them out there, absolutely we would apply. That would mean that we don't take money out of our capital risk.
Okay. So would we still, sorry for beating us to death, but would we still apply even though that we've got the money of the climate action grant? Can we still apply for other grants to fund the HVAC for the municipal hall, even though we've got that grant money? Can we?
Could, could we have tried to use some money to offset? Just, just remember, we have to use that 122,000 this year.
Sure. So 120,000 is going to spend this year?
Yeah. Right, I'm just thinking, if we could apply, use some of that to offset another grant and you got another grant, then we could take some of that 120,000, we could put it into the museum HVAC.
Yes.
Right? If we did get the one for the museum, like I, I'm just wondering if we can double up on that.
Every year, how long is taking a breath?
It could take a long time, three, four months.
But I mean, still.
But absolutely, we're going to try and we try for all of them.
Okay.
There's a plan. Okay, I got two different ones, but I'll just do one, someone else could do something else here. For the, excuse me, the IT upgrades, yes, important, it's gotta be done. Is this request on purchasing all new like laptops, desktops, monitors and that? Or have we looked into doing a lease thing where they're automatically every four years or whatever, your systems are upgraded?
So you did mention that at the last meeting and I'm sorry, a week wasn't long enough for me to dig into that. I certainly will. But we, and I, we just all, I don't know, we all got emails today from our IT consultants saying, hey, at the end of October, like my work computer won't have any service anymore because I have Windows 10 and can't be upgraded. So absolutely, we'll look into potentially leasing equipment, but we do have, even our server is one of the ones that is coming up due for replacement. So it's important that we, that we plan for some replacements every year.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to put that's little.
Yes. I, I haven't had a chance to look into it yet, but.
So just to piggyback on that, I noticed that that $25,000 is on every year.
Correct.
Coming up to.
Correct.
So it's 2027, 2029 is still here, so it went hundreds, I guess, well, 105,000.
Yeah.
Projected. Is that what it costs, 125,000 dollars?
We have a server that runs everything. We have computer systems on the water treatment plant, we have computer systems on the sewer treatment plant, we have, every one of us has a computer that we work on every day. Fire department, EOC.
Scriptions, I'm script.
All right. Not just laptop, but in office. Like quite, quite honestly, 25,000 is not gonna go far.
Every year and then let continue and that is something I'm, I'm, that's on, but I'm there every year.
It has not have, this is based off because we now have an IT contractor who can sit down and give us a five year budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
So it, it will probably carry on in perpetuity as long as we're using technology, we have to keep it up.
Right.
Okay, second one, which I haven't seen before, talked with Joni about is the security systems. We're looking at two, possibly three different security systems. Is there any way that they could all be combined into one so that everything is running instead of having the museum doing their own thing and municipal hall doing their own thing and rec center, public works?
So, and, and this one, I'm sorry, it's, it is a little confusing in the request. The public works request, so the 100,000. That's for the, the district as a whole and would include the rec center as well. If council chose to kibosh that, the rec center is still asking for their own. So if council keeps the public works, then we can eliminate the rec center.
Okay, now I'm confused. Where's the rec center when I'm here?
It's all for the public works one?
It's all for the public works one, it's all combined.
So we got a hundred thousand dollars on the municipal.
I have to look at some reason.
Uh.
Thirty dollars.
Oh, sorry, and that's, it's not on this sheet.
Okay, yeah.
But it is in the big written that you got.
Okay.
The reason it's not in the big sheet is because the public works one is here. And if council goes for that, we don't even have to talk about the rec center one.
It's all together.
Correct. Yeah, that's what that here involves, yes.
That's a, so, point, and you said through the mayor, we've seen a couple of things, not to scare people and not to start rumors, but. Uh, we've had a couple of things that, uh, require, definitely require additional security. Uh, we've had things in our recreation center, like we're looking to try and increase it to twenty-four hour access. We're gonna need a little bit better security, uh, we're gonna do birthday parties for kids. Trying to do Halloween parties and all these other things, and with that, there's an added level of security that we want to make sure that we bring in. Uh, there was an incident earlier on this year where our CMP had to attend a children's party because there was somebody hanging around outside. We don't wanna hear things like that, so these things, the security gets another, another really good level of security. At public works, the water treatment plant was broken into a couple of months ago. Stole a couple of laptops, it's gonna take us months to recover from that. Uh, and these kind of security, we have security down there, but we need better security, the thing is, it's actually a requirement by interior health, they have these things as well. It's smarter than thermists, so there are requirements that we need to have to find a place to get a security. Uh, city hall has had the windows smashed every week, pretty much, it's.
Twice the last six months.
Yeah, twice, it, it, yeah, to, every other month, it seems to be getting smashed, the conservation officers have had their windows smashed regularly. Uh, so we want to set up these security meetings and measures in order to try and monitor that a lot of that as well, I think it's funny about us, Ben.
I agree, I think it's done on your last screen as well.
Yeah.
Uh, can you just elaborate on how if somebody was. Smashing a window, I mean, are we just, that would be on camera and that's what we're looking at, and.
You know, it's, yeah.
It's not a big consciousness.
No, it's, it, it's really not, but.
Electric fencing.
Yeah, right.
Joanie and electric stuff is getting me worried, she wants a taser and electric fence, like, taser, there's so many tasers. Lucky it's not made on the budget yet, uh, I, I think it's a deterrent, and I think it, I need mostly police and the RCMP in order to try and. Frame up who is weird and what they're doing, it really just gives them a little bit more information. Would they take it to court, would they be able to charge them? Likely not, but, uh, if there was something more serious, then yeah, would. You know, if someone was to, was to break in and then run through the building and ransack, and then, yeah, there would be a little bit more security there with it, you know? Uh, but again, it's, it's, it's the advantage that we have, we've got. Uh, Tanner and the group have got lights installed a couple of weeks ago, it has almost stopped people sleeping in the side of the building. Instant night stretch.
Lighting is, is.
Lighting is fantastic, you know, so I think that when you get these kind of cameras, basically, it helps, did I eradicate it? No, no, there's a lock in the door, stop people breaking in, no, smash the window, but again, it's a deterrent.
So can I ask, when you're looking, or whoever is, whoever is looking at, um, security systems. Do, do we ask like a couple of security companies to say, hey, come and do us a presentation, this is what we're looking at? We would like to know cost, we would like to know what it looks like, what does it look like on camera, because I know. I know some places, um, the camera does not, it always just. Uh, show, uh, a good picture where I know others show a great picture.
Yeah.
And again, part of our purchasing policy is that we get. Uh, we were, depending on the value of something, we get, um, more than one, more than one.
But they'll come and show or, or there's.
Uh, more than likely for a, for a project such as this, I know, um, for Cam, um. Putting together the, the budget amount, yes, there was a guy that came for a couple of days, I think it was, and scoped out and, yes.
Okay.
There should be a couple, three outfits do that, and store everything up.
Yeah, yes, we, we are required, that's part of our purchasing policy, to, to make it open and great.
Sure, thank you.
Cheap as a couple of dogs.
Council McHenry.
I'm not, I'm good.
Are you good?
Yeah, you guys have gone through it pretty hard here.
Love that bile action.
So you'll, you'll notice that my requests did not come prioritized, because they can't really be gotten rid of. Um.
How long can we put this off?
Until May tenth. I'll send my marriage.
So. One of the things that I, I, I think we're probably at a point in the name areas, but one of the things that I think is really important to acknowledge, and I said this earlier on with Joanie. Uh, the reserves in the budget is, uh, at, at the healthiest ever point in the last ten years. That, that really needs to be acknowledged, and that's came around because of the hard work that Joanie's had to do in these things, and I think that that really needs to be, uh, applauded. Joanie spends, as a department head, Joanie spends the least amount of money, matter of fact, Joanie spends her own money. On certain things, which she asked me not to say, but Joanie spends her own money on colored pen things as well, but Joanie spends the least amount of money. She, uh, budgets her money, she keeps us on track, she does a fantastic job of it, and it's not Joanie's budget. My budget, it's not necessarily the council's budget, it's the collective's, or whatever, like, these things. Uh, it's actually really a dangerous and a very, very difficult job and a very hard time with a lot of stress on Joanie. Because it's very hard to put that amount of effort in. I'll take it very personally, so I appreciate council tonight being very kind, uh, and. Uh, very concerned about how Joanie is and, and, and what she does with it, Joanie takes no pleasure in coming back with. A nineteen out of thirteen and a twenty-three percent budget, at least because, but actually, at least because. That's what the figures and the facts shows in what we're doing, so I really appreciate council being kind on Joanie tonight with it as well, and I appreciate the conversation. It's a good conversation to have, and I think the, the members of public will also appreciate the hard work on it that council went through. No doubt it'll end up on Facebook, but they might not in some ways, but that's okay, that's what Facebook's for.
Yes, we really appreciate all the. And, you know, like I said at the beginning, it's, it's hard, because, I mean, we're here to, to work for. The constituency, the taxpayers, all of them, whether they're commercial, whether they're personal, whether they're, you know, industrial, whatever, we're here to work for them, and, you know, it's. It's, you guys move one way, we go the other way, and it should be the word in municipal everything.
No, we can, we can only provide the information that the council was elected to make those decisions, so. Council, good job.
I'm just gonna give a shout out to staff who fill out things and find out the information and quotes and everything, so. For them to get to Joanie for the courage to do the magic.
Yes.
Throw the ball, now we're gonna kick it to the curtain, uh, go ahead.
Uh, I would ask council to reconsider the column burial, that has been a topic in Lowell since Kathy Young was our treasurer. And, uh, she had the plans and everything for it, then I worked on it with her, but it was turned down. Uh, every time it came forward, and it continues to be asked for by the seniors. And by individuals who are left to care for urns of past relevance, and they end up in the back of a closet. And they would like to have a place to consume, so, uh, I would ask the council reconsider the column burial.
Is there not, um. Little plots there that you can bury your urns or whatnot already?
Yeah.
Formation plots. Okay.
Okay, um, all right. I think further with governor's meeting date. Will somebody please move that the March sixth, twenty twenty-five committee, the whole meeting, the view adjourned. Council McHenry, Council McFern, all in favor, Harry.
The dog guy here.
I'm not sure what he said. The adjournment is moved by Council McHenry.